... November 10th, February 11th, at 7 o'clock.
And uh, six mayhem, the children's board of the president.
By the God, we thank you, me and Debbie together, in our lives. We thank you for what City and State for you, for us here. It's for the wonderful people and artists that are there. And everybody who's out in all this place. Also, there is just two people that are there in their families. And they're all great people, great people, and they're just like, they're amazing.
We have a confirmation celebrating the 115th year of the Women's Civic Club.
Well, it means a lot.
This organization was founded in 1910, completing service to 2025. Whereas the Women's Women's Civic Club of Jasper, which was established in 1910, stands as one of the most enduring women's organizations in the state of Texas. It devoted to civic improvements, education, and community services for 115 years. Whereas since the founding, the club has gathered a guiding force in judgment, wealth, and character. Organizing projects that enrich the culture, educational, and social well-being of its citizens. From beautification and library endeavors to scholarships, local aid, and community celebrations. And whereas the Women's Civic Club of Jasper has long held the idea of the General Federation of Women's Clubs and GF of the city of Texas. Advancing programs that promote fine arts and preserve heritage, support, and education, and strengthen community partnerships. And whereas the members of the Jewish Club, past and present, have given generously their time, talent, and faith in bodying the highest positions of civic leadership and hospitality, and leaving their legacy that continues to inspire new generations. And whereas the 115th anniversary in the year 2025 provides opportunity to honor this rich legacy of service and celebration, the enduring bond between the Women's Civic Club, Anna Jasper, and the community has so played through surgery. Now, we're born high on the claim of virtue of the authority vested in mayor. Mayor, that is hereby proclaiming the year 2025 as the 115th year of Civic Club of Jasper. Encouraging all citizens to join in the best, expressing attitude and mission for this esteemed organization's 115th year of vision, volunteerism, and the dedication to the city of Jasper and Jasper County, Texas. Witness therefore, I have hunted to take my hand and have used the official seal of the city of Jasper to be the fix this tenth day of November of 2025. Is anyone here for a ticket?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay, I don't want to jam the channel. Hold it, hold on. Okay.
Mayor and Councilor, last month I voted to have the directors and chiefs come up.
Okay, Mayor, Councilor, we give them the report on the floodwork report.
We've put off the water production. Uh, we've pot and treated the total of forty thousand, I'm sorry, forty million four hundred and eighty-nine thousand gallons of water. Uh, this department also does routine samples, we've done twenty backpedal samples, uh, this month. Uh, the water distribution department, we have contractors laying a water line out sixty-three ways. They've installed a total of seven thousand and five hundred feet of line to follow with quite a few fire hydrants and everything. A lot of that line is charged and connected to residents after the month, so she did a lot of the visiting service. Uh, this department repaired twenty-five water leaks, installed twenty-six water meters, uh, done two water taps, and they also laid three hundred foot of water main and installed a hydrogen over the doctor's office on Morgan Hinkley. Uh, the sewer collection department, uh, done a total of sixteen sewer calls, uh, one sewer tap. They also, uh, were doing maintenance on the sewer line, we do camera, uh, they camera the line, we do gas poisoning the line. Uh, they also do like street drainage, we cambered over three hundred feet of street drains looking for problems and, uh, deficiencies in there. Uh, wastewater treatment plant, uh, we treated in, uh, a total of twenty million nine hundred and forty-three thousand gallons of water in the treatment plant. Street drainage. Uh, they use a total of twenty tons to repair pothole. Uh, they reclaim asphalt, uh, they use forty-five tons to recycle. Uh, we got a new paint machine, we've been painting some parking lots, stuff at the park, some crosswalks. They use twenty-seven and a half gallons of white paint and three gallons of blue paint. They paint some of their parking lots that seem to creak. Uh, they sloped over five miles, they straighten wide away, and also three miles, uh, uh, they swept over three miles of the, of the street view. And a lot of the maintenance and stuff they, they, they have, have one for those, that they, of course.
You, you're a sweeper.
Mm-hmm.
He was sweet, he was kind of a nice sweeper to him.
I think, yeah.
Yeah, because I never seen a sweeper go this year down the road with a pin. That's why I'm saying, I had to say this, you know, came shaking from, okay, thank you. We probably don't run, but I see, guess, I just asked him to come down, all these fingers coming out of his teeth. I mean, I ain't got a gun, cause.
She never come out here telling me she was recovering it up.
And I was shaking, seeing it happen in this area. Okay, what about Fletcher? Okay, yes, I'm just checking on those.
Mr. Mayor, the dose water meter is all that you live, is this all?
Um, our dose, with those replacements, new meters, new customers, or?
So on this upgrade that we're doing, we're replacing water meters, so we're, we're doing that. So in a lot of these, if we have issue with the meter, if there are work order in, we're trying to get moving. Uh, but yeah, we, we, we've got a lot of meters in that we're replacing.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, recently I've been visiting with you at the water department. I'd like to say the dog testing program at Plant really looks good. Sound like we've got water for a long time, a lot of cities are struggling with that. And also the solid waste, I was very impressed, we don't talk waste department. Uh, for those of you who don't know, state of the art, and there's bigger cities in which they have what you got. Thank you, people, for the work.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilor. I'd like to give a report for the electric department and driveway department. So the electric department made a, had a, worked a hundred and nineteen, uh, work orders. They, uh, went to forty power outages over the month. They, uh, only had one new service, but they also had four of this minutes, that's a good amount. They do upgrades, worked on several street lights and street lamps. So the, uh, driveway department, they actually trimmed about two hundred and five feet of, uh, service wire going to houses. They changed, uh, trimmed about eighteen hundred seventy feet of primary line. And then, uh, they, they also work on like road curators, they're there, you know, cut the line after work on the road curators, they're better. They cut three trees, and I think they ran the mulching, which is down low, they used a mower on it under the driveway, about the same amount of feed as the primary plant.
Uh, give a, a solid break report for much of our group. Uh, we did, we went three trucks, they, two hundred and eighteen, twenty-two, each load, and two of them. And for the whole month, we made sixty loads, that's like a thousand. And the yard is big.
Yeah, where are we taking our solid waste now?
They take it to New County and they take it to Portland. Lake.
And, um, not having any issues with them filling up. And our solid waste is kind of a hard set.
And it's a continuous thing, then.
Mayor and Councilor, for the co-enforcement department, uh, we had a total of thirteen commercial permits issued smart. Total of thirty-four residential permits issued this month. Uh, in co-enforcement title, we had, uh, six junk cars removed, uh, thirty vegetation debris baited. Uh, buildings removed so far, five, illegal sign picked up, twenty-five. Um, we investigated ten complaints. Uh, the dilapidated buildings that we removed, I said it's five. Uh, we also have, uh, just completed posting, tagging, identifying twenty-eight diluted, dilapidated mobile homes, which we are in the process of moving forward with, uh, either working with the owner. I, I would say probably about seven or eight have already contacted us with plans or pool permits to do it themselves. So we're working on the rest, and as soon as we finish up that process, we'll be coming back to council for government act so that we can get the group to move forward to baiting ourselves. I'd also like to bring up that we had two Marshall CEOs issued this month as well, so we had a couple of businesses opening up. We got one that was, uh, well, this one was actually after the last council meeting, but it's up there. They included, you had Sirella Aesthetics at one point, East Lamar. And we had, uh, Texas Workforce Association, we have a building number two, over there after Southeast Texas Freedom. We just recently got our email in from Southeast Texas Regional Plan Commission for the renaming of Graham to Lewis Street. The signs, I believe, are already up, but we got confirmation from nine-one-one that that information's not been sent out to everyone, good maps to county, and the one that needs to know. She's been, she said it'll be about thirty days and it should be on all the maps. Uh, I did also receive a, uh, email from the Texas Demographic Center that gives us our population estimates as of January first, twenty twenty-five, and they gave about, to their calculations, a growth of seven hundred and thirty-seven within our city. And, uh, the total right now is at, uh, seven thousand seven hundred thirty. Any questions?
I'd like to thank the board, we engaged in cooperating on site buildings, issues under control, and, um, hurt people, which I'm not careful about.
Given the way, any problem with people murdering men in dilapidated structures, fire and pies, anything like that?
No, I mean, there, there's always a problem with, um, vagrants. The purpose of the ordinance is to keep, you know, uh, you don't want to invite that type of vandalism into the house without being unsecured. So we try to secure every building we can, but, you know, but you can do everything you can, and if somebody wants to get in, they're gonna get in. Luckily, so far this year, we haven't had any accidents, incidents that involve five, with some, you know, death threats. We knock up a year to be able to fix that body up.
I think it's great, can you do it? I think it's great that you mentioned that there were two new businesses, correct? That you, that is wonderful. I think that's great that you included that in our behavior report, so that the citizens and council know that we have new business that, that's coming here too. It invests the things and the people who aren't following the code and all of this, that you're, you're giving a report about something positive in our community. So I really appreciate that, Mr. Chastain.
Good evening, I'm Lindsay with the library. Um, we do have some stats to report, but mostly the library, it was that human factor in the city. So a lot of, what we do doesn't always come in a number of factors. Uh, the one thing I would like to start out with is to say that we did, uh, receive accreditation for the state this year of twenty twenty-six, which means that we met the requirements of the state to be a qualified member of the Texas Health System. As far as October, um, our patronage continues to grow. This month, we added twenty-two new patrons, hours, and we, new people came into libraries, and our libraries are, which is always exciting to see. Um, our circulation numbers continue to remain steady. Uh, we circulated, checked out one thousand one hundred fifty-five items this month. That includes physical books, ebooks, audiovisual materials. The part of the library that doesn't really come in number, uh, factors is the outreach that we do. There's a lot of avenues that we're trying to study to see what engages the community. So, uh, we've been really drilling in, getting hard on community outreach. We attended the Halloween on the Sperry event, uh, where we distributed candy, program plaque, calendars, and bookmarks to promote the, uh, library events and programs. We have future community outreach events scheduled, such as a booth at Christmas in the park on the April twenty-ninth. And on December second, we'll have a table at the reading honor, the student event hosted by the Jasper Junior High School. We've also developed a digital packet of our monthly program flyers, which we email to local school campuses and KJAS. All of this has really helped promote our program, the alley events. Um, this month, we held eleven, eleven program events. Total attendance of all the programs combined was a hundred and thirty-three individuals watching to go, or to attend some sort of an event this month. Our top performing programs have been a homeschool hour, storytime, and our book club. This month, we had local author Kate Boudreaux, it's in our book club where she's able to talk to us about her writing process and upcoming projects, which was really fascinating. As a reader, you only know that side of the novel, what it's like for you. So getting to hear the other side of that, what it was like to create that piece of work was, um, very exciting for our patrons, and they have a key that we do that more often. The other exciting, um, program I would have to say would be our Halloween Bingo Bash. We had thirty adults, less than costume, and attended our Bingo Bash at the DFW Hall. We were very receptive to comments, um, on our patrons, like the fact that we were creating opportunities for them to get out of the house and to socialize. So we're really honing in on that and seeing, um, what other programs that we can develop for them to get out and mingle with each other. We are in the planning process of creating new programs for the year, and we'll have more to report on that in the next weeks. So that's good for the library, so if you have any questions. Actually, I think, can you tell me how three of those purchases works? Yes, ma'am, and so I, it is unavoided, so, uh, we purchase once a month, sometimes depending on book releases. Uh, normally waiting toward the end of the month is helpful. Uh, there's a lot of the time that we'll purchase books, and then we have to wait a month before we get them. So I try to line it up where they're released, we can order them, that way we can get them in at the same time rather than having to wait on them.
You still have the, um, computer lab, when people are not connected, where they come in and apply jobs?
Yes, um, in fact, we had our computer basics program. Um, in fact, today we had to register, that it's even for that, it's usually one of the basics on computers. But we had, I believe, a hundred and seventy-nine visits to our lab this month. So yes, sir, people are consistently coming in to use our computer lab for jobs, or, and types, Texas drivers, and horses, multiple things. So yes, sir.
Great, thank you, both, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and City Councilors, I'm Jessica, we've been at Udon's School Court. For October, we had ninety-three violations, um, we had, we completed eighty-four cases during the month. Seventy-two of those defendants paid their fines and bail. Twelve of them appeared before the judge, three were dismissed for the terms of driving. One was dismissed for deferred, and four were complaints dismissed, also could have insurance or paid double registration on time. And then three were dismissed by the prosecutor due to being deceased. Um, we had forty-seven, uh, arrest warrants issued for the month. Thirty-five of those were traffic, eleven were state law, and one was city ordinance. We had forty-two warrants that were cleared, means they were paid in full. Um, thirty-three of those were traffic. Eight of those were state law, and one was city ordinance. Our total files and case total was twenty-one thousand six hundred forty-seven dollars and sixty cents.
If I can ask the question real quick. Um, there is some, I told you, it's been work with you guys to try to recover some of the, the fines. How is that going? Is that still very successful?
We have, it's not been installed yet, we just contacted Inho, which is our system that we use. Um, I did do a poll up until last week, they say, but hopefully within the next thirty days, that will be installed on our computers for the collection module. And then from that, it should be around the end of the year, so looking at the end of the year, hopefully first of twenty-six. But all that's going great.
Well, Mayor and Councilor, in terms of fact, we've done the, uh, captains pretty, this far, the chief officer, that, I don't think, goes, is all obviously in the board tonight. So for the month of October, we had a total of seven hundred and one call for service. Our officers took a total of eighty, um, reports. We had a total of fifty-three arrests for the month. We had two hundred and ninety traffic stops, or two hundred and twenty-two were issued warnings, and sixty-eight were issued citations. We had eleven traffic crashes in the city, uh, limits. And our investigators in our CIV division were assigned fifty-three cases and cleared twenty-five of those. What do you want? Any questions?
Okay, thank you. Y'all, like, the poor kids. They're very grandy. All right, be this soon.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilor, I'm gonna give the, uh, monthly report for the power department. As y'all know, may not know, October is the October 20th month, as the first full week in October is October 20th. So in the month of October, we actually got forty-five calls, they pumped ten thousand, three hundred and forty-five gallons of water. Uh, so of those calls, one was a structural fire, one was a vehicle fire. One was a mutual aid provided, letting wood scraps rush through fires. Two accidents, one motor home RV fire, one appliance fire, one equipment fire, one earthquake fire. Four false alarms, one hazmat, ten unauthorized burns, and other service calls, or ten, or other service calls might be a little on the line, treating the road. Things like that, maybe. So of the, um, five events that we held for property, we ran seven hundred and seventy kicks throughout our property.
Seven?
Seven hundred and seventy kicks.
What's an example of an unauthorized burn?
An unauthorized burn, burn brand violation, or, or disqualification.
It was lifted, flipped it, but it's reinstated now.
It's restored today.
That's very important, I sense, from now on.
Right. I'd like to thank the fire department, Pawser Farming, and the police department. I will go to sleep tonight and rest well, and you guys have a standard by your bed. And I appreciate those people who do that. And I just thank you for them.
We got the absence of the department reports. All right, everybody's standing at the trouble, we'll put it down. All right, and we're going to move, have them on the agendas, number, number nine, that's number one. All right, Jeff, get out of here and go over it.
Okay, all they need is that, and that's even. Uh, I forgot what street it's on, but I had requests that there were, uh, be a speeding sign, who's in charge of that? Which one, they didn't, I heard they're in charge of the stop sign, the speeding, the, the.
The, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the.
Okay, well, they did put one on the street that I request. I appreciate it because the, the people there, they called me. I'm very glad that y'all did that. They called me and said, we want to thank you. And to thank you all for putting, putting it up. Okay.
Just in from a, uh, the change at the school of the stop signs. Um, I'll be less likely to run over somebody now. For those who aren't aware of it, Cornell, uh, over. By the junior high, there was a really confusing street there in those stop signs.
That whole intersection. I'll come and see him.
Wouldn't that be nice?
Go ahead, Mr. Jeff, not.
Um, Mayor, Council. So the, uh, the variance that you have in front of you is from the Jasper Hospital District or the Royal Building? Uh, I'm sorry, it's for the Charleston Building. It's going to go right beside the Royal Building, the one that's currently under construction. So, uh, when they had their plans designed, uh, they had put in some, tried to space their buildings so they can maximize that lot space and put as many clinics as they possibly could in there. And when they did that, the plan designer created a, uh, priority construction on the exterior wall due to the separation distance. Come to find out that they had a delay in those windows in that wall. So we were to expedite construction so that they can move forward with completing the Royal Building and also starting the Charleston. They're requesting to encroach on their, uh, rear setback by ten feet, which they established because it's a commercial development. So when they had their platte proved, they established thirty-foot easement all the way around their property. So since they created that easement and it's above the minimum standards, they're asking to encroach back on top of that because it's already been recorded as such. So ten foot's gonna allow them the separation distance between those buildings to not have to wait to over those windows and move that construction forward. Uh, fire chief and I both reviewed those plans and we both recommend that the agreement be approved. Any questions?
Make a motion for that.
Say anything.
All in favor?
Uh, aye.
That's on the agenda. We have my words and serve our approval. We have that, um, four considerations there. We won't lump them all into one because they're there now. We approve of the two sets of minutes. The regular call meeting on October fourteenth and special call city night, uh, council meeting on October twenty-first. Consider for approval of twenty, twenty-five tax roll resolution. Consider for approval, agree, new regulations for, uh, temporary closure of the state highway for the Christmas parade and rodeo parade. Consider for approval, the signing of the fair housing law, the proclamation affirming the city's commitment to the fair housing.
I'll make a motion for that. Pass it on.
And motion and second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. For you. And add discussion and our actions. Consider for approval, authorizing the procurement process for a grant ministerate and a plan of a rated committee for the C D B G D R grant through Texas General Land Office. I'm in.
I think.
So we have a motion and a second. Do we need to go ahead and be together? Okay. And be on that and authorize the procurement process for an engineer and appointing a rated committee for the C B, C D, B G D R grant through. We're gonna do those together.
I have a question. I'm usually Susan is here, though, not with me.
This is, this is, alright, guys, so this is to get a grant, I'm sure you're like Susan, yes. They gotta go out for, for, uh, for, for proposals for that and we also have the.
So that's what you're asking, is approval for a grant administrator like what Susan Silver usually does for the city of Jasper and also for an engineer?
Yes. And to one council member to go along with Liz, Bob and myself, that's the right. For what project? That hasn't been decided yet. We're gonna get this done first.
Hang on. What is your engineer? What, what is his view from this?
To draw the plans for the project within the week.
This is simply have those folks in place to service our needs for future projects.
Because in December and January, when they authorized for us to go out to Philly to do this, the different things, the grants available before, and we'll be ready for that. We're just getting a little bit of it.
Got your motion?
I, before you, because money I want, make the motion to put this council on the, on all that's ever ready for you.
Now everybody speak your mind. I'd be happy to volunteer.
We're gonna make the motion or just fall here? I will make the motion to cover all three of them.
I see.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consider for approval, purchase a new tractor to replace John Deere tractor that draws to a park.
Well, back in July, we lost a, uh, John Deere tractor. She died late model to a car. Uh, but we've been looking at purchasing something else, working with insurance company. Uh, so we went out and done some investigating on some different types of equipment and we found this mantis mower. The mantis mower is a larger unit. It's built just for this, uh, uh, for the mowing. And it's not an add-on to a, a younger tractor like we have in Michigan. Uh, so we think this is more feasible, safer. It's, uh, got more attachments to it, uh, it's got more reach. Uh, it's just more, uh, compatible and everything to, you know, the, the mowing and keeping the rider, driveways and street drainage and stuff, uh, clean. So Jasper County actually has six of these units they bought last year. Uh, we went out and visited with commissioners, worked at it, uh, actually sent it and, uh, operating on the street, uh, in the county. And we think this is a feasible purchase, uh, for our needs, is safer and more efficient. Uh, it's a little bit more expensive than, uh, just a regular younger tractor, but we think it'll last longer. Uh, and just, you know, help the departments, uh, keep the roads up and driveways like those.
You're talking about using multiple department vehicles. You know, they're bringing trees and driveways, uh, through the car lane, bad thing. So I'm like, is the replacement cost the insurance though?
So the insurance is going to cover seventy-seven thousand two hundred dollars.
I have a question. Um, Mr. Lee, will this help with some of the outages that, that we experienced that you would be able to cut more from these lines, correct?
Well, I learned that too. There's a couple weeks up, the, the distribution line, because there are like, you know, forty-five or fifteen foot in the air. This is the long doorway around thirty foot. We have a lot of the things that we do, it's gonna turn off that iron around the end and just park it up to close it in the car.
So this isn't gonna affect the, that department at all, uh?
Yeah, yeah, we will. Cause we can actually get the plating down over if we can't reach it. And if we have to reach across the ditch now, we can't get anything else over there, it's a mover.
Yes, because a lot of the times the outage that people experience is from the lens, not from the line. So you're saying this machine right here is gonna help you?
Yeah.
So how many do you have? That's the only one we have?
We, we have two, uh, John Deere sideburn mowers, one by, and you guys, we still have another one. But the only, the reach on that one is eighteen feet. So this will allow us a lot more reach and, uh, uh, it's got more attachments. Uh, John Deere mower only has one attachment that goes along with it. This has multiple attachments and stuff that we can add to it that, that through the driveways and streets can run.
And this is a machine the county has that we, if public breaks, we can swap out with them possibly.
If needed. Yeah, as if they were loud. Yeah, yeah. Man, they, they have six of these units that are in service at this time. And, uh, all the precincts has at least one. And all of them, and they're interchangeable. Yeah, the implements is equipped and they have a high-flow, uh, hydraulic system, uh, that, that we interchange. And they have more attachments that fit on the front of this. You got sweepers, you got blowers, you got stuff that we can utilize in the future. We can buy more attachments for it in the future as they come over.
It looks like they're in storm conditions. It'd be quite helpful with that motion part. I, I, I have to repair things and some of that also.
So on John Deere tractor, the cab's fixed, don't it? So the operator has that actually physically turned and reached over to this cab, actually the whole cab turn is one hundred degrees. So they can, you've got more visibility, it's a lot bigger cab. Uh, the tires spatter over. So if they have to back up and turn, they can turn the wheel and spatter over to get closer to a ditch far away from the ditch.
And you feel this is gonna help provide better service to, to our citizens, to our customers? Yes, because it, it is quite a jump, um, for four hundred and seventy-one thousand two hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-eight cents, correct? That's quite a jump from, from the original tractor.
Yes, but all equipment's gone up in the last few years, so, you know. It's just, it's a matter of time, everybody. So, uh, we have Mr. Underwood here. He's the representative for, for mantis. So have any questions for him? We'd be happy to answer those.
Does it come with any kind of warranty?
Yes, it does have a warranty. We're looking into extending the warranty and getting a file on that also.
Since you've had six of them operating in the county, have there been issues?
There has been. They've, uh, some smaller issues. They have worked on those and got them resolved. And I did talk to commissioners and they said that they were resolved, uh, so.
They're pleased with their equipment?
They are. They just received one, remember was that, Mr. Underwood, last week? Yeah, sorry, so we went out and looked at it. They just received the hell out of them.
Were these, were these American made?
Yes, they are.
Parts ready to bake?
Plants in Seguin, Seguin, Texas, that, that action factory assembled in Iowa. You just brought the Seguin and all the moors and the implements are there. So you're four and a half hour drive. Something really got bad, we did, we didn't have big shit.
We'd like to get that plant moved, yes.
Me too.
Yeah, I'd probably be the one that has to go get the car.
I would also like to mention, Mr. Kelly, the amount is coming from SRPA for this, correct? Yes, so, and so we need to keep that in mind as well, huh? So we have to remember that once that money from SRPA is spent, it's spent. And this is where they're recommending that we take this money from four hundred and seventy-one thousand two hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-eight cents from SRPA funds.
We less than seventy-seven thousand, so we'll get insurance money that.
Yeah, so seventy-seven thousand was the insurance money. And to replace the tractor that you had, how much would that cost? A hundred and fifty thousand?
Oh, two hundred and fifty.
Two hundred thousand. And instead, we're asking for a request for four hundred and seventy-one thousand two hundred and seventy dollars and, and fifty-eight cents, right? It's a, it's a, it's a enormous amount, I think, Chris.
But with the, uh, uh, with the old tractor, was it just one implement?
Yes.
If you break down the implements and just over the tractor and mowers.
I mean, we can, we can cut them and save money.
But you get a lot more use out of them.
Yeah, and so this actually has a saw hand, it's got three blades on it, so you can reach out and cut, brush, sticking out, clean cuts instead of with the, uh, bushel, the bushel of mowers. Uh, I mean, you know, we're gonna use implements different places to do a lot of different things.
I mean, I want you guys to have everything that you need to be able to do the job and, and absolutely the best job that you can for the citizens. It's just an enormous jump. It's enormous.
It is, but we, we feel like this equipment, you know, it's gonna last a lot longer than the, the older equipment that we've had. So the purchase is higher, but it's gonna be, hopefully, we're planning on it lasting a lot longer because it's built just for this.
The thing about the John Deere tractor, you put it on, it just not the bound. That, that, that one was always a retrofit for that tractor, you know. There's always guys always laying over, they're doing that, it's more common that the tractor's breaking down. So it, it, the tractor was held in the back of that anyway, it was down for a minute.
I went out to the county barn with the equipment. It's an impressive piece of equipment. But something I noticed, this over to the side was a John Deere tractor, roughly off of it. That was previously a little more, basically what you're talking about, it broke itself because it wasn't built for that job. So they got a pile of junk out there that they're having to replace because they, they're cheap.
Right, my question is, can we afford it? That's all I'm asking.
Yes.
That's all I'm asking. Can Jasper, Texas afford that?
Well, the, the money is gonna come from SRPA. So the money that we use to get citizens a rebate back on their electric bill. And we always discuss that, that once that money is gone, that money is gone. That is where this money is coming from, from SRPA.
Yeah. I think we'll table this, but. Don't worry. You make a motion table?
I'd like to make a motion to load it in.
We got a string shot. She's made a motion to table.
Have you?
Nothing.
Either.
Right. I'll second. I need to make a motion that we table this.
I, I think we need to research this more. This is an enormous amount of money.
It's a lot of money. And we did promise the citizens for death about their lives. But we did that. Is that where the money is gonna come from?
It's coming from the interest of the dollars that are being held in reserves. And we did, we took, uh, we approved a huge chunk a few months back to come out of reserve. But the interest is, will come back. The reserves will never come back.
Yes, that's, that's, that's correct. We approved a, a huge, uh, chunk to do that. But every time that we spend this money, we always discuss that, that we're not gonna get any more money. This is, this is how much money we're gonna have. I understand the interest. But, but once the money's gone, the money's gone. And so we talk about storms and things like that of that nature happening. This, this is spending some of that money. So I just wanna be sure that, that we need to do this right now for that amount. That's an enormous amount. I mean, you, seventy-seven thousand, you said, is how much the insurance paid?
Yes.
Yes. At four hundred and seventy-one thousand two hundred and seventy dollars is, is the. I'd like to research it. I, I second, uh, the motion table.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to table. Is there any discussion on it? All in favor of taking the, the, the pose?
Aye.
Two, hold pose?
Aye.
We have a tie? I'm, I'm, both of you.
Both of you, both of you.
Right, do not table.
Okay. Okay, so it did not get tabled. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to purchase the new tractor.
We got a motion and a second to approve, Adam, six, six, the purchase of the new tractor to replace John Deere tractor. Any discussion?
I am also cautious with city money. I think when I first looked at it, I was a little bit shocked at the price also. I understand your concern. After seeing the equipment and seeing what it can do and getting testimonials from the commissioner, uh, I think it is a bit investment.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Hold pose?
I oppose.
Okay, we have a tie. I vote for approval of buying the tractor. We have to sit down to item number seven. Consider for approval. And amend and update ordinance chapter two, the meditative article four, records management program. amend and update ordinance chapter two, the mandatory article four, records management program. Fred, you have planned that for three.
Mayor Council, this is update. We got it in from the state about their records management. Some stuff changed on state law and stuff, and so this is updated in order.
You have to put some compliance in the state?
Yes.
I believe we approved.
I second.
You have a motion and a second? Any discussion, any questions? All in favor for approval?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass it. Do we do that? Consider for approval, renovation, authorization submission of grant applications to the county safety office.
Mayor Council, hey, a few months back, the, uh, state opened up a grant for, uh, places partners to apply for a no-match, uh, grant for ballistic, uh, windows for, uh, officers for the, uh, units. It also comes with, uh, ballistic door panels to go inside the actual doors itself. Um, so, it was deemed a, 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 of the resolution, uh, it pretty much authorizes chief officer to, to apply for the grant. And also, um, this document is that, that if any funds are not used for the last, or if, if they give us more money than what's needed, uh, funds, we will be, uh, returned back to the state.
I'll make a motion for third.
Second.
You have a motion and a second for approval? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And second, pass. Do we give four zero? Item number ten. Consider for approval, official ballot vote for the twenty-six, twenty-seven town candidates for board membership for the Jasper prison district.
I like. I'd like to make a motion. Um, it's my understanding that, um, Mr. Hall says withdrawn. And in light of that, I would like to make a motion to cast our votes for Dean Miller.
I see.
You have a motion and a second? Any discussion?
Sorry about that, Doc.
Any, any further discussion? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes? Yes. And that raises down to number ten, chapter time, for seven. I, I've got one other thing. We got a, we got a thank you this week from, what, what was that person? I, I fourteen coalition that is coming from Jasper. And it is already work being done on it out in West Texas. And I fourteen folks is headed our way. They need to start doing everything they can to get this done. I won't be here. It, I'm sure it's years and years out, but Jasper's right in the bullseye. So, everybody think about it and we need to get this done in years from.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'd like to thank the Women's Civic Club for all the work they've done in Jasper. Uh, for those who are not familiar with the program, they started back when women suffered, which was a thing, and they thought, get women to vote. So, we know how that worked out. They also started the first public library in Jasper with their own funds. They also pushed for prohibition, but I don't know if it's perfect, so I guess we'll have to give them a laugh. Uh, but what they've done, the whole, what have you done for me lately? Is they are helping our animal patrol, um, dog pound, they're going to use that term, to build a dog park so that our rescue animals out there can have a better life and they're running back to their, uh, their civic work. So, if you see them, thank them, please. Also, uh, they always might give some free dogs, if anybody wants to take some dogs out there, appreciate it. Otherwise, folks, Jasper's a great place to live, great people. Come see us for one day, come see us for a weekend, come build a life here. Great people, great community, we love you. Thank you.
Uh, just real quick, I've had a lot of questions about our economic development and especially questions about the sports complex or the possibility of the sports complex with JECO. I would encourage all of our citizens to please watch the videos there online of our economic development meetings. If you have any questions, I'm sure the board members at JECO would be happy to answer them for you and the council members as well. Um, from what I understand, just to answer the questions that I receive, uh, they do not anticipate, uh, this sports complex going forward. That's not me saying that, that's from my understanding. Um, and so, if you have any questions about this or, or the vote that was made in two thousand nine or any of the questions about who will be able to play at this new sports complex, because I think there's a lot of confusion that surrounds it. And I've received a lot of calls. And from what I understand, this is for travel ball. This is not like the baseball park where all kids can go and play there. They would have to pay to play at this new complex if this was made into a reality. So, that's just my understanding, just basic knowledge that I have about it. But any questions or concerns about anything that's happening at JECO, I would like to encourage all citizens, please go to the meetings. Please speak during public comment. Please call your council member and also these board members. The council members work for you. All JECO board members work for you as well. The city of Jasper belongs to the citizens.
Look, I'd like to make one comment on, on the sports facility. Uh, last week, we were in a three-day session up in Fort Worth. And one of the programs was sports facility. And it was a, a town called Portland, down in Corpus Christi. Small community. They said that, that Corpus Christi is full of industry. But inside the city limits, they had the old tax base for industry. And they built their sports complex and they say that, they told us it saved their city. That, and, and it has to have the right management, it has to be a management group, and it has to be done right. But they are pulling in from thirty-five hundred to forty-five hundred people just about every weekend. Sports is no longer, uh, summer or, or fall. These people play these traveling teams and they go, my nephew's in Dallas this weekend playing ball. But to bring eight, eight, two thousand people in here on a weekend that doesn't live here, then they got to put heads in beds, they got to fuel, they got to buy chips and drinks and ice and spend money in our city. I, I don't know very much about the sports complex, but I do know that if it's done right, it can be an economic benefit. If it's done right, if you can afford to have it done. So, just like you said, let's, somebody needs to dig deep and research and see if there is a valid thing for a company.
Absolutely. And if this is what the citizens want, absolutely.
So, any other discussion? I hear most of you down. Make, make a second?